Okay, good evening. This is the Situate Planning Board, October 13th, Planning Board meeting. We have an agenda that was posted. Any changes to that agenda?
Uh, just to drop the discussion of the special permit for the countryway.
Got you.
What's the agenda as a matter of fact?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a Form A for 26 Tickner Place. Who's here to represent that? Come on up. Tell us who you are and tell us what you're trying to do here.
Dan Sullivan. And I'm some of the Bidens on my land, so I go off to my neighbor.
Okay. And Laura, had you taken a look at this?
Yeah, Mr. Sullivan's selling a large piece of his land to his neighbor. The land has a pool on it. It's got some, has some good area to it. So if you look at the dashed line between, behind number 32, that's where the old lot line was. And all the rest of the land belonged to 26. So 26 is selling all of this to 32. Giving, we don't really know, but it's being transferred.
26 came all the way over here?
Yeah.
This, this back piece belonged to this lot here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, so that's what's happening. And the frontage is not being changed for either lot, so there's really, you know, no problem with the plan.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
There's already, those two structures are already there, right?
Okay. Any comments from the public? All right, then we might have, here you go.
I move to endorse, as approval not required, a plan of land for number 26 and number 32 Tickner Place, Situate, Mass., prepared by Peter E. Tuttle, PLS, for Daniel F. Sullivan and Stephen E. and Malin K. Agostino dated September 1, 2016, as the division shows a change in lot line which does not alter the existing frontage.
Seconded. Been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're all set.
Okay.
Someone gets a new pool.
That must be second prize.
Thanks. How was he asking me the question? It's Tickner, right?
It's Tickner.
Tick.
Tick. Tick, tick-tock.
Um, do we need to wait until 7:45 on the administrative review? It was. It was or was not. So do we have people here for 704 Countryway, like plan of administrative review? Common driveway.
Registered engineer, Morse Engineering. Application for an administrative review for a common driveway to service two lots located at 704 Countryway. This property was before the board for an A and R plan a couple months ago to divide out the existing house number 704, which is on the left side of the plan. On the right, I've highlighted where the new proposed house is. Straddling the lot line between the two properties would be the common driveway. It's approximately 79 feet in length from the curb at Countryway to the end of the common driveway. It's 16 feet wide. It provides a 20-foot by 30-foot turnaround as necessary and would provide access to both of the properties. We feel it meets the intent for approval because it eliminates a curb cut at this location. Right now, this property has two curb cuts. We would be filling in both of those curb cuts and replacing it with one curb cut. So it meets the intent. Countryway itself in this location is a public road. It's in good condition. This is a scenic road at this location. However, inside the right-of-way, we're not taking down any stone walls or trees. There is a stone wall on the property, but it's several feet back onto the property. It's not located in the right-of-way itself. Conservation's reviewing the stormwater portion of this. So we're really here just for the, the common driveway piece.
Laura?
Uh, there are quite a few wetlands on the property. They're to the rear of the property, so that's why conservation is involved with the stormwater rather than the planning board. The zoning allows one house for every 20,000 square feet. And when you have a common driveway, you can align the house so that this dimension called lot width goes the length of the house rather than across the lot. It's, you know, the house will be like facing the long way. It'll be different from, you know, most of the other houses in the neighborhood which face front. You've also got a very nicely constructed stone wall across this property, and it is not in the road layout, but you will be, you know, breaking into that. So I don't know if you want to, you know, try to address any of those things. You know, presumably that would make the property a little bit nicer if maybe they finished off the stone wall, you know, going on a curb around the driveway or, you know, something like that. Um, you know, it's a, it's a really charming, pretty neighborhood with antique houses. I think this one is, what, 1778?
Yeah. Oh, exactly, but it's old.
Pretty old.
It's number 704?
Yeah, that's 704. So there's a lot of character in this neighborhood, a lot of charm. In any case, aside from that, there really aren't many issues with this. It's just a routine common driveway.
Question on the...
Let him go, it's fine. I'll wait.
You wait?
No problem.
Go ahead.
I just thought it was open to the field. Um, the, is there a retaining wall that I'm looking at? Is that what I'm seeing here? Around the common driveway to the back?
No, that's a, a crushed stone trench to the stormwater. The driveway itself, it's graded, it's a 1.7% slope at the entrance and 4.9 slope at the back. It ties into the existing grades fairly well.
Could the, the part that, I know you're, you're removing some of the stone wall for the new driveway, could those pieces be filled in where the old driveway was? Or is that the intention?
Yeah, it certainly could be filled in where the old driveway is. I think we'd be amenable to that, continuing that wall.
Because actually, there's two places. Right? Because there's, as you said, there's two curb cuts existing right now.
There's, there is, that wall starts at the corner of the property here and runs to this location. It ties into an existing garage that's staying. The curb cut that you see for the existing driveway is located right here. So we, we'd fill that in. It's an approximate 20-foot gap, which is what we're going to be creating with that new curb cut to the common driveway.
So you're closing up the curb cut?
We're closing up the curb cut for the existing driveway. So we can, we can fill in the wall in that location. That's not a problem.
But they're going to close it off here at the road, right?
Oh, yeah, I'm assuming so. They, the, there would be no curb cut, like you'd close it off, or how do you do that? I mean, is there a granite curb on?
So, yeah, there'd be, um, you'd cut out the back of the pavement, uh, parallel with the sidewalk, so that you'd have a continuous sidewalk through that location. You'd cut out between the sidewalk and the pavement for Countryway, so that you have a grass strip between the two. Right there, I just believe it's a edge of pavement. I don't believe there's a curb in front of this property.
Keep that burn.
Yeah, so you'd match that, you'd match that burn along Countryway or that edge of pavement. But you'd create grass strips to make it look like the remainder of the street.
Okay. One sec.
Um, there is a garage on the property. That's going.
The garage is staying. We're removing the curb cut for that as well. So it will just be used as a storage shed essentially.
Okay, and this rectangle is the new, with the house, or is that the garage?
It's the house. This is the, the house right here.
Oh, and here's the little garage.
Here's the little existing garage.
Okay. Now, how, when you come up the common driveway and take a left to go to 704, do you then park on the brick driveway?
You do. The brick driveway stays in front of house number 704. So you'd take a left into that emergency access turnaround, and right there is the existing brick driveway for 704. So you'd be parking right there in front of the house.
Okay.
And how do you get into the other house?
Right. That's my next question.
So the new house? The new house, the parking spaces for that are right here. You'd come in the common driveway and take a right, and there's two parking spaces for that.
But there's no garage.
No garage on the new house. Side, the existing one is being converted into a shed.
Mm-hmm. So the purpose of going the 79 feet is so that you have a turnaround?
The purpose is so that, yeah, a fire truck could pull past the turnaround and then back into the turnaround and pull forward out onto Countryway and do a, a turn that way.
Okay.
Bill?
I'm mostly.
One last question. So the, the brick driveway would just, but there'd be like, I'm assuming this is asphalt, right?
This is asphalt. You'd bring new asphalt right up to the brick. I don't know if he's planning on redoing the brick or maybe asphalting over that, but that brick driveway location would still remain as a driveway.
Good. So what's the, what's the dashed line indicate then?
The dashed line around the common driveway?
Yeah.
Represents the easement of the driveways within.
Oh, the easement, okay.
Yeah, we provided an easement detail, a bearing and distance all the way around.
Okay. And what's behind in like 1A and 2A? Are there houses there?
Right, this property, basically from Countryway, it drops down into a wetland that's behind these houses. You rise up on the other side of that wetland, and on the backside of this is the subdivision that's Gridley Bryant.
Oh, okay.
So you back up to those houses, I'll back.
That's where Myron kept his bees.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Um, there's maybe quite a bit of pavement, there's the two driveways, and then there's the turnaround, and there's not all that much space on this property. Some of the other small common driveways, I think you used, you proposed to use one of the two side driveways as the turnaround.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if you looked into that with the fire department at all?
That's similar with what we're doing here.
The turnaround is part of the driveway for number 704.
Okay, so then the, the, um, the straightaway that goes back between 1 and 2A, that's not the turnaround, that's just there?
No, that's just there to pull.
That's part of the pulling forward in order to back out, right?
Yeah, so the truck would, the truck would pull forward up into that area, back into this turnaround, and then pull out onto the street. This turnaround, this is not the parking space for 704. The parking space is, you'll see that there's a label here, "Brick Driveway," that comes off of that. So this would be where the cars would park for it. That's where the turnaround would be.
Okay, I just wondered if there was any way to reduce all the pavement? But maybe listen.
Yeah, I mean, that's the minimum size, it's 16 feet wide coming in, and 20 by 30 for that turnaround.
And the Conservation Commission is doing stormwater?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Reggie?
Um, oh, actually, on, how much parking is there on 704 and that brick driveway currently?
Two spaces.
Two spaces? No, I was just curious how much parking was currently. It's not the, it's staying the same.
Any, any comments? Yes. Could you identify yourself?
My name's Mark Doer. I live at 694 Countryway, directly to the sign of the property. Right here.
Yep.
Um, we have a common wall right here. Some, some of the wall is in my property, some's in his, but basically, that's the property line, okay? Right behind the house, it drops right down, angling basically into the wetlands back in here. Um, my concern, or there's several concerns, I hear that he's working with the water, but the drainage is right here at the very edge of my property and his property. It runs underneath my property and comes out into the wetlands.
You're talking about the street drainage?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, concerns, if you fill in this area down behind the driveway of the house, what happens to my wall? Number two, um, what is the plan for the wetlands in the back as far as if there's a new buyer of this house? Will this buyer be able to do anything with that wetlands in the back in the future? Will they, I mean, they would have to fill it in quite a bit to get 10 feet off the ground, you know, to make it so it wouldn't be a flood zone. That would bring it up above the backyard of my property, okay? And it would be blocking off the drainage from the street, as well as there's creeks, there's ponds, that kind of thing in the back.
So when you say, could you just clarify that a little bit? When you say "fill it in to get to 10 feet," fill in the back part you're talking about?
Yeah.
Not where he's putting the house now?
No.
Okay.
But if he plows in, what's he going to do? What are you going to do with the dirt that comes out of here? There'd be a direct drop from the edge of that house right down to the wall. And what's the plan right there? What, what will the runoff from that property be to my property? And I don't want anything to happen to the wall. It's been there for hundreds of years, and it's a very nice wall, especially on my side. It's like four feet high. And, um, that's, that's pretty much gives you an idea. What I'm concerned with is the common wall and slope, the drain from Countryway, and the wetlands in the back, what's going to happen with that? And the water encroaching my property, as well as the dirt or whatever. Maybe they have a plan, but what if somebody else comes in and they want to fill it in or something, so they have a flat backyard? You know?
Yep.
They have a flat backyard and tiered way up to my deck level, which is probably 10 feet off, 12 feet off my backyard. So it's that much, it's that drastic of a drop.
Okay. Maybe we could ask Mr. Morse to try to address those issues?
Sure.
So before you do that, could you just give us an understanding of what the grade is now and what the grade's going to?
Sure.
So the grade right now drops off Countryway here is at elevation 46, thereabouts. The property slopes toward the wetland. The wetland out at the back here, we have at elevation 30, thereabouts. So there is, you know, a 16-foot drop. What we've done with this house, this is a walkout basement in the back, so we're not proposing to bring fill around the back of the house so that the backyard isn't the same as the front yard. It's walking out at a lower level. That being said, the grades next to the house are tying in as the foundation steps down. So we're not proposing any grading within 20 feet of the side lot line. So that stone wall along the side should stay just fine.
It's good on the one end, but it does slope down in between the house towards the wall too. Um, to your right.
Sloping this, this general direction.
Right, but it's sloping, it also slopes this way from the shack, what you call a shack. That thing is, it's been on fire before and so forth. It's really a piece of junk. But the property just slopes like this. I didn't know what the elevation is, but this is a wetlands back here. And my concern is encroachment to my property, damage to the wall, okay? Will in the future, some other owner want to come in and fill it in and do something with the wetlands down behind my property? Which, there's properties on Gridley Bryant that would be affected too. So...
Those are all issues the Conservation Commission needs to address because they're charged with protecting the wetland.
Okay.
Anything within 100 feet of the edge of the wetland is under their jurisdiction and...
And it'll be covered in an order of conditions that will be attached to the, to the property.
Well, with the...
So you, you might want to attend that particular me, I don't know when it is, but you might want to attend that.
There's a meeting on the 26th, I believe, this month here. I can double-check that. Yes.
And just to clarify, I guess that...
Where did you get your Michael now? And that's him. Mark Doer. And A conditions. D E W A R. That contest on...
Get them somewhere.
Conservation's doing stormwater, right?
Right.
Okay.
But from, from the perspective of this drawing, the, is the red dashed line, is that the 100-foot buffer?
That's the 50-foot no disturbance.
That's the 50-foot no disturbance.
Correct.
So, yeah.
The 100-foot is the green running through the front yard.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
When the...
And it doesn't sound like, um, so given the 50-foot buffer and then your intent not to really disturb anything up to the wall, it sounds like the wall's going to stay as it is.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, a number of years ago, Myron, God love him, had a real issue when the common driveway went in across the street because it flooded Countryway. And it was an absolute disaster. And it had to do with drainage in the street more than anything else. And I believe that has been resolved.
They put the drain in.
Yep, finally.
Meaning the driveway drained all of its water to the street?
Yes.
Yeah.
That big common driveway.
It still brings all the gravel down, it covers over the drain.
Yep.
And the water just puddles up there.
Um, it's basically, it's right across the street from the property that we're talking about. If, there are three houses at the end of this common driveway, which is really a hill.
Right, right on the curb. If you start to, start the curb, that's where the common driveway across the street comes down.
And, I mean, you go through there in a rainstorm and you, it's huge.
But your objective in the stormwater design is to keep the water managed on the property as opposed to dumping it into the street, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And the street water out of the property.
Right.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there is a shallow gutter along the edge of Countryway directing it to, you know, storm drains or catch basins in Countryway. We're maintaining that gutter along Countryway. And then when you look at our site, the driveway here drains onto our site, it doesn't drain onto Countryway, so it wouldn't exacerbate that problem. Um, yeah, I mean, Merrill, Merrill Associates is doing the peer review on this. We haven't gotten their comments back yet, but, you know, with this layout, the runoff from the driveway is kept, you know, fairly far from that stone wall, as well as with this house layout the way it is, you know, you're going to have half of that house being directed primarily to the left side of the house, and all of the roof areas directed into roof dry wells for the smaller storm events. So our stormwater counts show there'd be no increase in rate of volume to the neighbors, and that's being reviewed by the town engineer at this point.
Right. And that'll be addressed at the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then the drain from Countryway, does that run across your property there, or is that?
No, not across our property now.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I have a question to, as a follow-up to what Laura said about the aesthetics. You were saying that it, I mean, it's obviously longer than it is wide, but I mean, is there anything to specify that the, the front still couldn't be visually the front of the house? Or were you thinking that the...
It's more like a shotgun house or something, right?
I guess, what was, what was your concern, I guess? Maybe that's the better way to state it.
Well, the...
Yeah, so the builder, Tom Mead, the applicant, the gable end of this house is going to be facing the street.
Right. Like a shotgun house kind of thing, yeah.
So, I mean, the front of it's going to be on the gable end.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
All right, I was just mainly following up on what she was saying.
I think it was more about where you measure the width, right?
Yeah.
We're now measuring it this way instead of this way, right?
It just determines how you place it on the lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, are the utilities coming down this driveway too?
I think they'd be across each individual frontage.
Across the frontage, okay. Okay.
Is it really awkward to put underground wires in that location because of the, because it's just the one house?
We have, um, we have overhead wires here going, I believe, across the street because the pole's on the other side. And then we have just one, one water service coming out for the new house. I mean, the existing house already has electric water services to it, so we don't have to bring in stuff for both, it's just for this individual one.
So if you're going to do underground wires, you'd have to have a box in front?
In front, in front of the house, yeah. And likely a new pole there to come across the street.
It's probably not good to have another pole. Okay. Do we have a motion?
We do indeed. I move to approve the site plan administrative review for a common driveway at 704 Countryway, lots 1A, excuse me, 1A and 2A, for Touchstone Capital Partners LLC, Tom Mead, manager. One, construction shall comply with the plan entitled "Common Driveway and Stormwater Permit Plan," lots 1A and 2A, Countryway in Situate, Massachusetts, by Morse Engineering, Company Inc., dated 9/14/16, with revisions through 9/2016, except as they may be modified to meet the conditions below. Two, conditions of the Conservation Commission Order of Conditions and Stormwater Permit are incorporated into this decision. Three, the applicant will provide a deposit of $5,000 prior to the pre-construction conference to guarantee initial maintenance of the stormwater system, cleanup of the site, and providing an as-built plan. Four, a copy of the operation and maintenance plan for the stormwater management system will be provided to realtors to be given to purchases of homes prior to purchase. Five, the town planner is to be notified upon completion of construction. Six, the standard conditions for common driveways approved by the planning board after a public hearing on December 17, 2015, shall be included as conditions of this decision. Seven, the stone wall that will be removed for the new driveway will be used to complete the stone wall across the opening of the existing driveway.
And that would be the existing driveway for house number 704.
Yeah.
You got a second?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This was much more manageable. Thanks. Much. Thank you.
How do you do it, Anne, like in your mind, like know all these places, like, I mean, I know this area. The street, visualize.
Do you know where the library is, the old, it's right around, right there, right in that...
Yeah, it's right across the street.
I guess I'm just impressed at your knowledge of all the, when this comes up, like remembering everything.
You know, I'm glad you remembered that because...
It was a big group. He was holistic.
I mean, it still has its advantages.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's still an issue. No, it's pavement. And it just, when we get a real good, the same thing happens, believe it or not, on Booth Hill Road. And we end up with all of the debris and what have you, right in front of us. Yep. Do we need to keep these?
Right, I assumed it was, that's why we have wetlands protected.
No, I don't think so. I think I just need the Form A stuff, so...
All right, where's the Form A one? I don't know where that went. Oh, all right.
I've got one. I've got two, I need one more.
All right.
Okay. We're now moving on to Form A for 48 Marion Road Extension.
A man with many hats.
So we got three sets of drawings, one, two, and three.
Okay.
Yeah, I recognize that drawing, I see it.
Again, for the record, Gregory Morse, Morse Engineering. This is a Form A subdivision on Marion Road Extension. The purpose of this plan was to file with the land court to basically take two existing lots and merge them into one. So this isn't the creation of a new buildable lot, but it's the merging of two 5,000 square foot land court lots into one new compliant 10,000 square foot lot. Complies with the frontage 100 feet on Marion Road Extension. Marion Road Extension is private at this location. It does provide suitable... Being determined as frontage. It is paved at this location, it has utilities installed within it. There are other houses on pretty much all of the abutting properties to this. 100 feet of frontage, 10,000 square feet of area, it's entirely upland area. This is in the Residence III zoning district.
There's really no issue here at all. This is kind of a public service type of Form A because, not that these could ever be used as individual lots, but it really formalizes that this is one lot. So it's, you know, basically a good plan.
So the frontage on a private road is fine?
The road is a superhighway, but it's similar to all the other roads in the neighborhood. It's about 15 feet wide and it doesn't have any particular grade, doesn't have any curbs, but, you know, it's similar to all the roads in that neighborhood.
Okay. Questions?
Just a quick point again back to my comment. So in the back of this lot where it says here C-Land Court Plan 331, this is the Steve Yorkland, right? Am I thinking of that right?
Yeah, I think he backs up to this.
Yeah, so that's what we were dealing with.
Yeah, the family compound thing.
Exactly. Exactly. Residential compounds?
Yes.
Yeah, whatever it is.
Okay. All right, no, I just want to make sure I got the context correct.
Great. Reggie?
No, nothing, really.
Are you ready?
Comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll turn it over to Anne.
I move to endorse, as approval not required, a plan of land in Situate, Mass., prepared for the land court by William McGovern, PLS of Morse Engineering Company, Inc., dated 9/26/2016. This plan shows existing land court lots 868 and 869 combined into one new lot with 100 feet of frontage on Marion Road Extension. While Marion Road Extension is a private road, it is a 15-foot wa, it is 15 feet wide and is adequate for access by motor vehicles.
All right, then move with second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along.
Another Form A.
Form A for 49 Gilson Road.
Who's that?
Who's here for that?
I know that.
Want to table it?
Do they really need to be here?
Then let's just, Sally Forre.
Shall we just move on? So now you're up.
The owner of this property took, let's see, they took a piece that was at the east end, and that's going to be combined with 55. So they took a piece off of 49 and it's going to be combined in 55. It doesn't affect any frontage. We're kind of looking at the stormwater permits because I believe both of those have stormwater permits, but we're working with the engineers to determine if there's any impact or not.
It looks like the frontage is only 75 feet, or is this, are these two lots being on the lot?
Well, Gilson is the one in front, so that's really where you have to worry about the frontage.
Well, that's what I'm looking at.
So, yeah, so the one I've had 75, it's not going to change. And 49 has 100. So basically, why you can endorse this is that you're not changing the frontage. The frontage is nonconforming for 55, but you're not taking anything away from it.
And what's this lot in the...
Somebody else's lot.
Oh, okay, so they're not doing anything with that?
No, I think someone else owns it.
Okay. Because usually the dark lines indicate what they're chopping up, I guess, but...
Yeah, usually. KNE Construction have been working on both of these properties, on 49 and 55, but someone else owns 53.
It's the little house. It's a skyscraper.
Yeah. Yep, and it sort of goes back this way.
So basically, we're just, we're breaking off parcel A, which was part of 49, and adding it to 55, right?
Yes. Just giving 55 a little more space, maybe making it a little more marketable. I think, you know, that's something that the contractors would like to do.
Mm-hmm. But it's still sort of pre-existing, nonconforming on front, right?
Yeah, so if they expand the house, it'll still have to go the same way.
If you have questions, I'm not sure there's anybody to ask it of, so...
It is what it is.
Yeah.
I mean, it's...
So...
I move to endorse, as approval not required, the plan entitled Plot Plan Number 55 Gilson Road, Situate, Massachusetts by Douglas Bailey, PLS of Grady Consulting LLC for KNE Construction dated October 5, 2016, as the division of land is not a subdivision because it does not alter the existing frontage required under the zoning bylaw.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, can I have your version?
Absolutely.
So this is all on property now?
Yep.
Okay, moving on to...
Accounting?
Accounting looks like our next item. Have any bills to pay?
We have a few.
All right, move to pay Wendy from Ontario, $1,300 for design review and evaluation of the Weatherby House at 50 Countryway. Move to pay, this is one. Move to pay Massachusetts chapter of the American Planning, $255 for registration for Laura Harbottle at the 2016 Southern New England APA Conference.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay.
And I don't have a pen. Who has a pen? Minutes. Move the minutes of September 22, 2016.
No changes, doesn't need to send the email?
Huh?
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Liaison reports.
CPC meets Monday night to talk about all kinds of different little things, like the pocket park up in Minnet, review of the dog park, and assorted other goodies.
And is that it? That's just an ongoing?
Ongoing, what, nothing's been...
Nothing's been decided or voted on yet?
No. Oh, it won't happen for a while. No, so we haven't met, it seems like forever. So, and we're also going to be looking at the purchasing of the Muncie property and the Hennessy property. We've been waiting for appraisals to come in on those two pieces, so...
And is the dog park, are they, are they just coming in for their 10%? Is that what they're really asking for?
I guess, that's what they want.
Yeah, okay. Any other liaison reports?
I just have a question, I guess, to Anne about EDC and what we saw for the last time with the report on Green Bush. Is that going to be made public or put on the website, or, I mean, what's the next steps?
The next step is to go before the Board of Selectmen, and then we figure that this is going to take approximately 18 months. We want to do some zoning, what have you, design proposals, design guidelines for that area.
Basic recommendations, yeah.
Yes. And then after, probably in January and February, we hope to start having public meetings to bring in the stakeholders, property owners, what have you, to see, get their reaction on what may be coming forward. This is, this is a process. It's going to take some time.
Won't they be involved in the design piece?
What, the stakeholders?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Okay, anything else? All right, we're on to the town planner report.
We're working very hard on the open space plan. We are a bit behind on having a plan in place, so we're trying to get that done as quickly as possible. And hopefully sometime late winter, we should, you know, have that completed and beginning the process of getting it up to the state. And let's see, we're looking at different things we can do with some of the funds that MAPC has, and I'm going to explore whether that can be used for any of the Cole Parkway redesign that we talked about with EDC. We're also involved with a whole variety of different kinds of signs. Karen's been working on the scenic road signs, which are, you know, coming back, which is great. And I'm working on banners for Green Bush, North Situate, and Hammerock. And we're working on the Cole Parkway parking signs, and then there are the wayfinding signs, so it's, you know, I'm just hoping we don't really get too many of those wayfinding signs. There was, you know, that was something that...
Create too much confusion.
So we'll, we can regroup before that happens. And I think the ones in Cole Parkway will be like a nice trial to see how we like the design and how they look and so on. And see if there's anything else.
What was happening with the little paved walkway that we were trying to get done, is that still in process?
We did get it, we, I ended up splitting it up into all the different components. And we got the electrical meter and posts removed, and we're getting the catch basins cleaned out, but that's by a separate company. Then I, you know, gave the price, you know, request to the three consulting engineers to do the ASBIL plans. So we have, you know, we have two prices on that. Those probably won't be done until after all the work, but we got one price on the walkway, which looks very good. And I'm just going back and forth about the depth of the base because what they said was a little different than, you know, what the spec said. But hopefully they can get that done this year.
That'd be good.
Hopefully we'll make our resident really happy.
Be nice to get it done before winter, you know, just so that it's done by this year.
Yeah, that's what I meant, by this year. So that's going, going on. And then Tuesday, I'm getting hauled into the selectmen's meeting to talk about development that's going to be using sewer and how much is there and where is it? And, you know, where is it, why is it? So that'd be interesting.
That's at the select, selectmen's meeting?
Yeah.
They're meeting Tuesday night?
Yeah, they're meeting next Tuesday.
Even though town meeting is the next night?
Yeah. Yep.
And what is the, are you presenting something, or are they...
I'm not really, I gave Tricia kind of a spreadsheet. I'll give everyone a copy so you have it. It basically just takes the DEP standard for wastewater, you know, per bedroom, and just multiplies it out times the number of bedrooms that we think we're going to be putting on between the Toll Brothers Development, which is really the biggest, you know, by far, that seems to be about three times the wastewater, you know, sewage as, like the Drew Company and the MBTA, that's, you know, that's...
What about the 40B project over there on 3A?
That's going to have private, you know, some kind of private treatment system.
If they can get a perk.
Yeah. Yeah, so...
Speaking of that, I mean, years ago, speaking of 40B, I think it was the, the development was called like Herring, Herring Brook or something?
Herring Brook Meadow, yeah.
Yeah, is that completely dead, or is that, is that part of the calculations?
None of them are really ever dead. That one was also not going to be on sewer.
Oh, really?
That was going to be on some kind of private system.
Okay, I always assumed since it was near the wetlands, or near the...
It's right in the middle of marsh.
Exactly. That it would be sewn.
Which 40B on 3A, the one that was just in here recently? All small units, not different?
No, as you go down Country, as you go down Route 3A and you pass PJ's.
Right.
And you will, this, there's a house that's for sale, right, or whatever. And then there's some opening marsh. And then there's another set of property. Martha's Lane is right there. It's before Martha's Lane, and it goes in back.
That's the Herring Brook.
That's Herring Brook.
We're talking about the one that's off Booth Hill Road.
Well, we were doing, we were talking about...
That's the one I was talking about, yeah.
Yeah, and then there's also the Stockbridge one.
Yeah, which is also not on sewer.
So none of them are on sewer?
Well, those, those aren't.
Of the 40B potential apartment development, none of those were on sewer?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a real quick question on signs. I just was curious, I think I mentioned this before, but on 123, which I've always talked about why we don't have an entering Situate sign, but right on Cross Street, all of a sudden, just it appeared this sign that has like the town line, and it's nicely painted and new, it says one side is Situate, one side is Norwell, and then it has another, it says town line. Like, where did that appear, or who did it?
Must've been the state.
Yep.
Yeah, must've been the state. Those are all state signs.
Oh, really? The town lines are state signs?
Yeah.
Yeah. Doesn't make any sense, but okay.
Do not question. Be grateful.
Well, it's not the, it's not the entering, it's not the white ones that we see, like on 3A, like between, like, Buena Haza and Situate.
It's the one that has Situate this way.
Exactly, exactly. And then the third leg, or the third piece, says town line. Has anyone noticed that?
No.
It looks like it's brand new.
I've seen others in other places.
It's right on Cross Street on 123.
Hmm.
Before, well, yeah, right before you, Enley School or Watch Hill.
Like a field trip.
All right.
Yeah.
Just was curious how it appeared.
I'll be interested to hear how the conversation goes at the Board of Selectmen meeting about the sewer.
I'll be there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, all I have is a couple of factoids. You know, I'm not, you know, really, I'm certainly not the problem solver on that one.
Is the Toll Brothers project... Is the Toll Brothers project still threatening to come in, or...
Well, there were, there are always rumors that it's going away, but they are doing perks, and they've, they've been going through conservation to get their perks approved and, you know, when they're in wetlands.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so that's, that's going on right now.
Okay.
So, are you going, had to request the Selectmen? Is that where you're going?
Um, yeah, well, Tricia, sort of...
And what time are you on?
9:15.
Oh, my God. I mean, really? The bewitching hour.
It's my karma. I don't know.
Okay. Do we have Bill's motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.